We did the whole.
All right. Thank you, folks. Sorry, we're a little late. We had another meeting. At this point, uh, I'll call a meeting to order. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? Katie, do you have any?
I don't know if you wanted to add, um, Tom Week's resignation or anything, or?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I'll make that a motion that we add, uh, Tom Week's resignation to our.
Where do you want to put it?
Um, new business.
Yeah. All right, any? A little in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, any other additions or deletions? All right, hearing none, that's, uh, I'd ask for approval of the minutes of March twenty eighth and April fourth, the special meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the March twenty eighth minutes as presented.
All second.
Is there any concerns or any changes? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, special meeting, April fourth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move that we, uh, approve those meeting, those minutes as, as written.
All second.
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay.
I'll also abstain, as I wasn't here for that either.
All right, then, those folks that have not abstained, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? All right. Highway, road commissioner report.
Just a update, the, um, on Schoolhouse Road, we replaced a culvert sixty feet long that the old one had developed a hole in the center of the road. That happened about two weeks ago. Um, we're presently working on Schoolhouse Road, taking down dead trees and, uh, just before Misty Meadows, we're gonna take a bunch of trees down through there to create a ditch line to, and install one culvert to improve the road infrastructure for drainage and stuff like that. Um, the graders back going again. We're waiting, weather permitting, to start grading roads to finish them up, or do them up for the spring. First time going around the spring. Other than that, everything seems to be going along pretty decent.
Anybody have any questions for Cash with that?
Uh, Cash, yeah. I still get my ear bent a little bit. I'm, uh, turning, geez. Breaking away a little more up there.
On that corner.
Yeah, uh, I had to request if maybe you could put up a low shoulder sign or something ahead of that.
Yep, get to that.
Cause it is breaking right out there pretty good right now.
Another issue right by Craft's Road from Climb and Springs Hotel, too. Same thing happened where, um, can't think of his name, the house parent.
Yeah.
On that inside.
On the inside corner.
Constantino.
I've seen him. Same issue.
Yeah, that, that's all I had.
Okay. Okay. You want to talk to us about the wait stop bars? Cash?
That was something for, up for discussion at the last meeting that we pushed. Um, Joel Baker had talked about Walker Mountain and.
Yep, we having issues with people running the stop sign on Creek Road at the intersection of Walker Mountain and Creek Road. Um, when the state come in, there was, it's a, just a two-way stop at that four-way intersection. There was a, no sign that said two-way stop, or two-way, meaning that it was just a two-way stop, and the state, because of liability, uh, you can't have them no more.
Really?
Yep, it's either gonna be an all-stop or, or nothing.
Really?
So, we've had serious issues at that coming down, headed south on Creek Road. And actually, what I did, I just went, people are not stopping there. I actually went and Robert picked up on it, too, is I put another stop sign below it.
Yep.
So there's two stop signs there. It looks ridiculous, but if it draws more attention, it might save a life or something.
Yep.
But apparently, if you put the two-way stop there, that means that the town realizes that there is a hazard.
So you're assuming liability.
Assuming liability.
Okay.
So you're better off take all the stop signs down anyways. Have no stop signs in town.
So, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna pay somebody to do a stop bar, but it, it, what's the legality of where the town just throwing down a stop bar?
Again, we'll try that, stop, stop bar there and across, coming off the south part of Creek Road.
Okay.
Um, another one that they run a lot is the four-way up here, which says "four-way stop," but they still don't stop it at Morton Avenue, Alphish. And then the other one, we gotta do, Bob's been asked about this one, is the one up on North Shrewsbury Road, Culver Road.
Yep. That's another one.
You're gonna get into it where you got to a mall?
Stop sign and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they love this one down here, too. It's, it's everywhere.
And, yeah.
The one that's the most dangerous, I think, at this point, is the one on Walker Mountain Road and Creek Road. So is there any way you guys can?
You've gotta wait till it warms up.
Yeah, but I mean, it's
Gotta be.
Consider that?
That's our plan.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, I don't know, we're just gonna throw it out there, just see what it does cost to hire somebody, do that, if you can get them, but hopefully we do it ourselves.
Okay.
We do have the, the print, but, yeah.
I was gonna say, Home Depot.
Yep.
Grab the paint.
Yep. Well, the special paint.
Yeah, it's the reflective type.
Yep. And it don't last that long.
No. Better than not having it at all.
Unless you get the commercial companies in that bake it on.
Right.
That's when it lasts.
So I don't know, that's why I was gonna weigh out, if it's worth it to have to undo it with the, the baked on and it lasts longer, or do we just keep doing it every two years, or every year, whatever it takes?
Certainly doesn't take very long, probably to go out with a roller and roll it quick, but.
The, the, the thing is to put the crystals down afterwards and the drying time.
Yeah. Cause you've got it, so you sprinkle the crystals on it.
Right.
Yeah.
Can you, can you get the guy to come out? That's another issue.
That's another issue, too. We, we've been working on East Clarenin Road, trying to get guardrails fixed through Lafayette.
Yeah.
That's been three years ongoing now.
Yeah.
Also, I wanna put out there, we're kind of looking for a person for about two weeks to help with, um, I've gotta be out of service for about two weeks, coming up here at the end of the, towards the end of April. And I'm trying to find a guy to help, um, for help chip and brush and just a helping hand.
Just the laborer, temporary labor.
Temporary labor. Um, the fellow we did have was quite an asset, but he's acquired two or three more jobs by himself, so he's not available.
What's a fourth, tell him?
What's that?
Tell him what's a fourth.
Did you wanna post that?
Be out of.
Katie? Let's, we'll post that then.
Yeah, Gloria, post that.
Are there any parameters around that, or is that decided now, or?
It's probably just out of the, so in, in the policy book, we have a temporary worker
Yeah.
job discretion.
Right.
So you're just gonna go off that, aren't you?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause in there it states what they have to be able to lift minimally and all that.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any more questions for the road commissioner?
All right, have anything?
I got nothing.
A smile.
Moving right along. Approval of the SLAB board warrants, they're right here, we just signed off on them, if anybody wants to see how we're spending their tax dollars. Guest, do we have guests? You guys wanna say anything, or?
Oh, I, go ahead.
I was just saying that, uh, you know, we were here for a couple of week, a couple of weeks ago to talk about the inclusion statement. We thought we'd show up again tonight in case anybody had any additional questions that we might be able to answer. And I know we're on the agenda for the, uh, twenty-fifth, so we'll be back then as well.
But we did, just to give you an update, is we did contact the state and legal folks and stuff like this, and we did get a copy of, uh, what the governor has signed, and at this point, uh, we're just considering that would be the, you know, the way to go, because it went through the State House and all this kind of stuff, so, um, but we wanna check on one or two more things before we do that.
Most of the feedback that I've gotten from the public has been to put it on the ballot and let the people decide. That's, that's what I've gotten all the feedback on.
Well, this is part of the ongoing discussion, and I think that if you folks are coming back, you know, she's just, I'm just telling her what's the feedback that I've gotten.
Yeah.
I did probably some of the same people, cause I, I heard similar comments, but.
I think the comments that I've been hearing have, you know, definitely been with people that are like, well, of course, like it's, you know, with the, like, equity, inclusion, not really getting, like, almost like, I don't understand what the issue is. You know, and just so trying to explain, like, this is a thing that other, um, towns have done, and if you don't have it, and then you look at how our town looks on paper, or you go to our website, things like that, it doesn't, there's nothing in that that would indicate that we are fabulous, welcoming, loving, engaging people, when you just look at, you know, what it is, it's, you know, it's, it's, looks pretty, um, like monolith, is that the right word? Monolithic, is that the right word? Sing, single, um, representation, everything is, it's all Republican for all of the, um, anything that states a political party, a hundred percent Republican, and then, um, you know, mostly white people, mostly white guys. So I think without a statement, I was, that, what I've been hearing from people is that that would really show, like, an intention that just isn't visible or obvious without it.
The, when we, when we were doing some of our research, and, um, I think the folks in the office here, um, one of the considerations, as I mentioned, was what the governor had signed off on, because they did all that homework, find out what the legality of it is, and, uh, I think that, I don't know if you read that or read the whereas parts prior to.
Even, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um, that would be, so if, if under Art's suggestion, like, some of the folks that he's talked to or had comments from, uh, to put it on a, uh, this is an ongoing discussion, to put it on a ballot of some sort in November, you know, you would have to wait till then to see what the folks in town, but not having to spend a whole lot of, uh, tax dollars on legal fees, that's why we looked at what that governor had signed off on, and, um, for me, not, I don't wanna speak for the other members, they can speak to it if they want to, that seems the most, uh, or is inclined to say what you guys were suggesting and that stuff, but looks like they, they have danced all the legal controversies that could possibly be there, so that's why for, for me, I, that would be my consideration, but to Art's point, if the public wants us to go through, wait till November in election time to have this, I guess.
Well, I've had people both ways.
Yeah.
You know, some for, some against it, but for the most part, uh, people want it on the ballot. And they said, that way I can make my decision and my privacy and my own voting booth and I don't know if it's a good idea or not, but.
The question would be, or, when you put that on the ballot, then you have to, for instance, for an example, we would use what the governor signed off on.
Yes, I agree.
And put that on a ballot, so
Yep.
people will come in, they'd have to read that whole thing
Yeah.
to vote it.
Yep.
Wasn't the governor's version of it, I'm so sorry that I don't have it, like, off the top of my head, cause I, I think I skimmed that one because I thought it had more to do with, like, state agencies and so.
No. Katie, do you have a copy of that?
I can, I can also Google it, so not to take up people's time, if you guys have read it.
I might have it, Mike, I'm not sure.
It was pretty wide-ranging, from what I read, it was, it did have, it mentioned in one part of it, state agencies, but it was also wide-reaching.
Yeah, very wide.
Yep.
We'll definitely take a look at that.
That's right, yeah.
Talk about it at our next meeting also.
Look at this damn thing.
So I guess this kind of work is hard to do, I, in my opinion, I feel like this work is hard to do in public, you know what I mean? Like, it's, um, equity and inclusion and that, that kind of engagement process, I don't think people like to necessarily learn things, especially like with a camera on, I think that's kind of intimidating, but I was just wondering if any of you guys had any questions about it, like, is this new to you, is this something, like, I'm sure you've heard the buzz about this in other towns? Is there anything in particular that you have a question about that would feel that you would want answered, like, does it feel controversial, does it feel important and inclusive? Does it feel just like more concerned about what a lawyer would say? Like, where, where are you guys falling with it?
Well, that's, for me, that was my first concern, the legal aspect of it all. Um, so that's why, for me, here again, uh, what he signed off, which right here, um, they have a lot of whereas, this, that, and the other thing, but his, the, the statement he made, "The state of Vermont formally condemns discrimination in all of its forms and welcomes all people who want to live and work and add richness to our state, regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender, identity, or expression, age, or disability, and will protect these classes to the fullest extent of the law. Let the second week of May be known as Inclusion Week, uh, to emphasize these ongoing efforts to make Vermont a more inviting state for all people. I call upon all Vermonters to denounce prejudice, to openly acknowledge and address our own implicit bias, and welcome and celebrate all people of all races, colors, religions, national origins, sex, gender, identity, or expression, ages, disabilities, and continue work together to ensure every individual can live freely, equitably, and express their opinions free from fear, intolerance, and prejudice." That was what he.
It's pretty inclusive.
I think it is, and I think that the thing is, given that the legislature, I don't know if you wanna copy that?
I, I, I can look it up online, if that's your own copy.
Yeah, oh, we could print it. But anyway, that goes along with what you guys were proposing, that you turned in, did it sound like that to you?
It, it does, so I wanna, I wanna see, you know, what, what does the organizers feel is the difference between that statement and what we're proposing?
And consider the fact that, once again, this went through a hundred and fifty different representatives, both House and Senate. So I'm sure they did a lot of homework. Having served up there for two terms myself, they did a lot of homework before he finally settled on what he settled on, so.
Well, I had a pretty good conversation with you and a couple of other folks after the meeting last, last time. And, uh, you know, there was some issues, even you agreed with me, on.
You had some very good questions, and, and we raised those questions, and we're getting answers to those. And we hopefully will have, you know, all of that stuff put together for the next meeting.
Is that something anybody would wanna expand on right now, or would you prefer not to? I, I do understand not wanting to, if you don't want to.
Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but I, I had an issue with the last line being, um, what's that?
Can you have that back, Bob?
No, the one that they were presenting.
Yeah.
Oh, the one that they presented?
And it said, uh, you know, that you should be able to voice your opinion freely, but Carol didn't really want people to voice their opinion freely, because she didn't like the guy that had the bad Biden flag. So, you know, I don't wanna encourage that type of behavior either. So do we wanna have that type of a sentence in our inclusion statement? Do we wanna be able to say, yeah, everybody should be able to voice their opinion freely and say what they want? Cause then we'll have maybe Confederate flags, is that something you want?
My God, whether we have that in the statement or not, people can fly Confederate flags anyway, do you know what I mean?
So then, so what's the point?
Well, I think the, the point, and, not, I hope I'm not sounding argumentative, but I think the point is, is that when you, when you put it out there, that you can speak it freely. Well, then that's one of the things that you take on, and so when your neighbor flies a Confederate flag, you bring over a plate of brownies and you say, hey, let me, let's talk about what this means, like, what does it mean to you, what does it mean to me? Like, it's that, that's the piece where I think it's like Vermont mixes together with, like, traditional values of how we engage with each other, and then also moving forward to a place where we're really stating our inclusivity. Because I think if somebody's hanging a flag we don't like, then Vermonters talk to each other, like.
Well, I, I, I see what you're saying, and I agree with you, but I think some people are, no matter how you wanna talk to some people, you're not gonna change their minds.
Right, and an inclusion statement's not necessarily going to do that either, a hundred percent agree with you, but I think what it does, as like, like, as the face of a statement says, that as a town, we're, we are in support of, and if you don't say, if you don't make the label, then it's difficult to feel included. So when they're saying, when, when the governor wrote down and made a list of the identities of people that are inclusive, that, that was a really important inclusive list, right? And so having our town just make a statement that we're in support of all identities, all gender, all race, all religion, you know, like, making the long list is really important. That's not gonna change whether the flags are out or not, but it changes who we are as a community, when people look us up and, and try and get a sense of who, like, a flavor of who we are. That, because we can't change the Confederate flag or the, the offensive Biden flag, like, we can't change that, but we can, but what we are in charge of is explicit statements of our agreement that everybody gets to speak their mind and everyone is welcome. So that's the only value I see in an inclusion statement, it's not gonna necessarily change the behavior of some people, but it's gonna show who we, who we want in our community. That makes sense?
But I think if you're, if you're, wanna have somebody look at our town and say, oh, they're inclusive, but then he drives to our town and sees stuff that he doesn't like, whatever it is, I mean, some people don't like the rainbow flag.
Correct.
So now all of a sudden, they're gonna say, okay, this town is not inclusive.
Well, I, I think what they would have, I think what you would say is if our statement Did I say something? Am I cutting off? If our statement says that we're inclusive, then we are inclusive of all, like, we don't get to pick and choose the ones that we only like, right? So if you, if we're inclusive and you don't like a rainbow flag and it's there, it's part of who we said we are, if you don't like the, the offensive Biden flag or the Confederate flag, it's part of who we are.
Well, then, then your statement should also include, because you wanna include everybody, well, then we should include, um, KKK people?
That's not an identity, that's a, that's like an interest, that's like a group, so we're not saying, and the, you know, the Italian-American club, and the, you know, whatever club, and, you know, we're not doing that. What we're saying with an inclusive statement is we're talking about identity pieces, so things that are, are of what people, who they are, like, on part of that, we didn't say Democrats and Republicans and independents, because that's not necessarily an identity piece, that's about who you are as a human being, like.
I didn't see whites on there.
Huh?
I didn't see white Europeans on there.
Right, but they're all races. Isn't it interesting that when we say race, what we accidentally default to in a predominantly white community is an idea of whiteness, so when somebody says race, we think other than white. That's part of what, oh, excuse me, that's part of what the, the statement really brings to the center. It should be all-inclusive, but that's why it's like all genders, it doesn't list the genders, do you know what I mean? It says all religions, not listing them. So it is all-inclusive in that, and welcomed, of course, we're welcoming to white people.
I'm an outside source, personally I'm for it, I'll make that out. But for a town that may not wanna be represented like that, asking for men to sign off on something for the entirety of the town, and then welcoming people here to realize that the majority of the town actually doesn't like that, would be, I feel like, kind of a gross misrepresentation and kind of mislead some people. I think that's an issue that might be making some people uncomfortable in the room. Not that they're against it, just that if the town's against it, it would be a misrepresentation, and that might get kind of uglier than it already is.
That's why the consideration for.
For sure. You're only speaking to the majority.
That's what the consideration is for putting it on a ballot. But that wouldn't happen unless we had a special election.
No, we're not gonna do a special.
And that costs a lot of money.
We're not doing a special election.
You have to wait till November to have that put on a ballot, so.
I, I, can I make one more statement, and then I promise I will stop taking up time, just to talk to that point, which I think is obviously very valid. We don't wanna make a statement that we don't genuinely believe in. I do have a concern that our town, when we look at the fact that the entire slate of everybody that's listed in our town is Republican, so there is clearly a representation here or, um, an identity in this town, but I think that when we look at our country, when we look at our state, especially when you consider nationally, what's happening nationally around inclusion and exclusion and harm, and when we look at what our state did around, um, I, I'm not exactly sure, but like, within the legislature, um, I, if, it, correct me if I'm wrong, women's, um, rights, um, health rights have been part of our legislature now, and then also, um, inclusion around, um, LGBTQ care and things like, I think, a piece, I, I could be really off on some of these pieces, but we're changing in a capacity that perhaps our town isn't changing as quickly right now, and I think in part, putting that inclusion statement in will be, will, will start to have conversations, whereas if we don't have it in there, then we don't have those conversations. We never become that place that is welcoming and.
Well, I, I, I don't like the idea that if we don't have an inclusion statement, that we're not an inclusive town. And because we're Republicans, we're not inclusive, that's.
No, no, I said all, like, a hundred percent Republicans.
I know, but that's
I didn't say Republicans aren't inclusive.
That's kind of the way you're drifting, but, um, if we don't sign onto this, that does not mean that we're not inclusive.
Perhaps, but if you do sign onto it, it does make a statement, a brave statement about who we are, who some of us want to be, who some of us wanna talk about, what some of us wanna do. It doesn't, it's not a final product. It's a way to start and engage people. And I think that that's important, and I'm saying that Republicans are not inclusive, but when a hundred percent of the slate is Republican, it sends a message. It doesn't send an inclusive one around Democrats.
What, what kind of message does that send?
Oh, just that, you know, the, the entire town leans in a way that, not a single Democrat is, you know, and it was just one position, I think it was all the justice of the peace thing, I think that was what it was, so it was like eight spaces, so I'm just thinking about, like, one, one place, or if you're trying to get indications on the website about who we are.
I think more and more I would consider going to vote in town, and what we would vote on is whether, what was proposed in writing by you folks, or whether we would propose what the governor had signed off on, and then let the voters decide. So I, I think that we could have this conversation all night long.
Correct.
Um, and we all agree that sometimes we disagree. So I would like to see it go that way.
Thank you.
The voters.
Appreciate you coming out.
Yeah, the voters will let us know. I'm sure.
There was one other comment that I think, uh, Art, Art made last, last time, and that was, um, you know, when you say the words, "all people." You know, and the question comes to mind, you really mean all people? What about the criminal elements? And that was a very valid point.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly, you don't wanna, you don't wanna involve, uh, you don't wanna invite a lot of criminals to come to your town. You know, so that, that's, you know, we need to explore that kind of wordage and, and see what we might do about it.
I think people are people, though.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Everyone's got a background. I think, you know, I think we, we as a community, we bring in, we love, we care for, and we, I said I wasn't gonna talk again.
Well, you know, you think about that, and I think that, um, we'll hopefully hear some more from folks out in public. You know, the, the discussion right now with folks who run into us maybe at Hannaford or something like this, is when we get the comments. But I think the bottom line is, it may But I think the bottom line is it may be a better way, to your point, instead of having, or your point, four people or five people decide something. It might be a better thing to let the voters decide on it.
People in TV land, let us know.
Yeah, maybe.
Let us know.
All right, anything else? Anybody in the public, anything else on that? All right. It has some public comments. Old business, we have some electrical work quotes for the town hall and the transfer station.
We're going to buy back out, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make short order of this. I think, um, we would save a little bit of money by going with Voitie Electric. So I'll just make a motion that we go ahead and approve Voitie Electrical to do both quotes as presented.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion, further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Done and done.
It's, uh, the question's been raised about what's being done. There's some work that has to be done according to passive for the transfer station and here. It was insurance related. So it's to get this building and the transfer station up to spec.
So Katie, you can notify those folks.
Good.
Chippenhoke Cemetery additional headstone request.
I was going to say, I see Mr. Peck's here and I, I got some questions about this too. So I don't know what, what your thoughts are. Have you seen this and what the proposal is?
Well, I saw the letter Elizabeth, Elizabeth sent and I went up and I reviewed the lot. Tape measured it. And I sent a picture to Katie.
Yep, which we have, we got it, yep.
So you look at that lot and see those two stones, one's the stones of Sweats as her parents. The other one is her husband's and where she plans to be interred at, when that day comes. Uh, the, both stones tend to go towards the line, the lot, towards the hill, leaving about six, six and a half feet from the stone to the market. It's visible there next to the stump.
Okay.
Okay, so talking with Bob, you know, we, we thought there'd be the possibility of, we want to put up, and I talked to Elizabeth, a flat surface stone, we've got two of them in the last two, three, four years, been placed up there, flat surface, ground level stone with cremation.
Yep.
Not casket, there's cremation for her son and daughter-in-law. But also talking to Elizabeth, there roughly is about 10 feet in front of both of those stones, because all the remains of those two stones are cremations. Her parents are interred inside the foundation of the stone, the sweat.
Okay.
That's what she tells me.
So there's almost enough room for a whole other row in front of it, huh?
Yeah, and especially if you want, but she, and like she says, she's out there for just a flush surface stone with cremation. And that's why if we, if the board chooses to go that route, then, you know, she'd be, you know, we need to give her a letter and directions and instructions and, but she's good with that.
But if we have to, our letter would specify that it would be cremation only.
Yes. And she's good with that, cremation only, surface, you know, flat, you know, surface level stone.
I mean, I can tell you, so speaking from, my family's interred over in East Clarendon, which is not a town cemetery, obviously that's private, but their policy is if there's room in the row and the stone can be placed in the row and there's room enough to get, and in our case, it was a cremation that needed to be placed, as long as there was room in the row and you weren't going to, you know, totally, like you can't, you can't throw stones totally off for, you know, for the, the mowers and stuff like that, which it sounds like this can be done.
Right.
I don't think there's any issue with it.
The one issue would be between the stone, the sweat stone and the, and the corner marker would be that stump in the root ball.
Yep.
But if you put something in front, you know, that's when she told me everybody's interred, it is cremated, it's roughly 10 feet, because it's a 16 by 15 lot.
Yeah.
16 feet long and 15 feet deep. And it must be so, uh, probably a good 12 feet from the front of that stone to.
Where you're standing, basically.
Right, to where I'm standing.
And I, I went and looked as well and, you know, agree with everything Kevin's, you know, said, that there's room to put, you know, the flat marker and two more cremains. I mean, it's 15 by 16 lot.
So hearing all that, I'll make a motion that we approve the request.
The second for discussion? I'll second. Okay, is there any further discussion?
I just, about the flat stones or the future maintenance and stuff with them sinking and.
By that time, by the time they sink maybe your cemetery guy at that time would be able to take care of it. But one of the things I was going to mention is.
Marine Corps answer.
We, pardon?
That's a Marine Corps answer.
Yeah, the, uh, you know, there could be a period of time from when the decision's made, which is tonight, and we hit that moment in time and most of us not being here.
Correct.
When that happens. So we need to establish something that 30 years or 20 years from now, whatever, you know.
Because they're not looking at an internment right now, we're talking down the road.
She, she's looking for a place for her son and, and daughter-in-law and that's what, you know.
Robert will still be here.
I don't know about that. The, the other question too, though, not that we're in charge of, um, solving family issues, but are there more, there are more family members that would lay claim to this lot?
Well, I didn't ask that question.
And if we grant this to this family and there's a whole nother contingent that comes out and says, wait a minute, we're part of that lot too, why weren't we a part of the discussion?
Well, yeah, but it's case by case though.
Right, and I would say also we take a look if we want, we take a look at the original purchaser of the lot, which we, I would believe be Elizabeth and her husband.
Okay. As long as, as long as, so.
So it is within family.
So I'll, I'll just alter my motion and if Art's good with it, just an amendment to it that provided we determine she has the authority to make this request. That's what I would like to see.
Yep, I'll second it. Yep, that makes sense.
So you approve it if she's the one?
As long, yeah, I mean, if she's, if she's the original, like, or if it's her per, or if it's her parents and it naturally, she's the only heir, so it goes to her next. I mean, just as long as we can kind of determine, there's not going to be a whole nother contingent that comes out, like siblings of some sort, they're going to be like, wait, wait a minute, we want, you know, we want ours there too, or whatever. Well, maybe I'm saving, maybe I'm saving myself headache down the road.
Robert, I'm, you know, president of a family cemetery down Long Island. And our approach to that is on a family plot that we, the trustees, are not going to get in the middle of family drama.
Yep.
And literally we tell people, first come, first served unless the family decides among themselves and gives us something in writing.
Yep.
You know.
Well, and that's why I think it, I think it does pay for us just to make sure that she's actually some sort of, some sort of a, you know, whether legal, whether she's on the deed or whether she, you know, whatever.
You don't want to be in the middle of it.
We don't want to get in the middle of a family dispute.
No.
At all. And that's always been our policy, whether it's, you name it, we don't want to get in the middle of a family dispute.
All right, restate your motion.
So the motion has been that we approve the request pending that she, you know, we determine that she's either on the deed or she's the heir or whatever to the plot.
And you agreed to that, Art?
Yep.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I have one more cemetery thing, we're going to shift topics here. I was doing some work over in Chippenhoke Cemetery on the Riddlin plot, you know, big monument there and fenced in. You know, we had recently received the missing finial.
Yes.
It was, it was down in Pennsylvania and someone sent it to us. Phil and I've got it reinstalled, we've done some other repairs on the outside, you know, fence of it. Uh, I started the process of cleaning the monument, which was, you know, pretty, you know, nasty, you know, at this point. I've used up the last of the cleaner that we bought last year for next door. And so I'm looking to get authorization to, you know, whatever, be able to buy some clean, this stuff's not cheap.
My wife did brief me before I came over and she said that to let everybody know that there are cemetery funds available to do another purchase. She said that there wasn't, there wasn't a problem.
A couple hundred bucks or something to be able to buy supplies so that, you know, when you're getting free labor doing this, they at least have what you need to.
She, um, she stated to me that she, her best of her, you know, looking at the cemetery, that there was roughly $3,000 available to do extra work between now and July. It's what her estimate was.
Make a motion with a not to exceed limit?
Well, he's only asking for a couple hundred bucks, I mean, we're.
Okay, I'll make a motion that you go for it, Bob.
I'll second it.
How's that?
Then you gladly accept free labor.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, ARPA standard allowance election.
Um, so the first reporting is due April 30th and this is a point at which you have to decide if you're going with the standard allowance or the revenue loss option. And the LCT highly recommends going with the standard allowance election. So best practice would be a motion from you guys for when I go and do that report, that I go with that.
Which the standard deduction was what, 10 million?
Yes.
Something like that.
Which is basically your award amount for our town.
There's no.
Yeah, I know, I know.
There's no way, we're going to have to do the standard deduction. I, I took a class for this online and, yeah, we have no choice.
Yep.
It gives us a little bit more.
Then make a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go for the standard allowance for ARPA funds.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I second, yep.
Okay, FEMA closeout letter, this is.
This is digging back in the archives.
Yeah.
2011?
Yep.
This is Irene, this is, this is Irene documentation.
Yeah, so a lady from Vermont Emergency Management was trying to close it out on their end and, um, was just making sure that we had gotten reimbursed for the demolition of it and we were.
Yeah.
For FEMA, they also need a letter, um, saying that they didn't need any permits for the demolition, which Gloria did the research and said.
I was going to say, we don't have demolition permits anyway, do we?
Which.
So the letter says, to whom it may concern, please be advised that the town of Clarendon did not need to issue any flood plain permits for the demolition of the building located at 814 Coal River Road associated with FEMA disaster, uh, 4022. And the select board chair would sign it, so when you make your motion.
So moved and authorized the board chair to sign it on behalf.
Second.
Okay. Any other further discussion on this? Hearing on all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
That should be the end of that project.
I hope so, boy. You guys were knee deep in that when I came on.
Oh, that was fun over there.
That's a while ago.
2011.
And.
That means I've been around too long, I don't know what it says about you two.
I have a comment, but we're on film. Two things.
That's what this button is for.
Katie, did you make a copy of that letter, Tom?
I have it right here.
All right. Could you read that for us?
Um, so I, Tom Weeks officially resigned from the Clarendon Transfer Station effective April 11th, 2022. And he signed it.
Okay, now we have, um, we would like to have another person serving over there because, uh, one of the two members that's over there is in his 90s. And that person right now would be the next senior person.
So he's kind of running things now, isn't he?
Right. So we're, I would suggest that we consider hiring another person so that they can break those shifts up over there like they had been with Tom. And post, have it posted for two weeks and then see who comes forward. It's a good side job for you, Kevin. Not that you don't have anything to do.
Well, to start off with, I'll make a motion that we officially draft a letter of thanks to Tom, um, and wish him all the best. I think from what I hear, that sounds like there's some help things, so we just want to wish him the best and thank him for his many, many years of service.
We all want to sign it.
And, yeah, I think that it would be appropriate for the whole board to sign that.
Yes.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I could be second on that.
Okay. And all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Katie, I assume, not to, you know, assume too much, but I assume you're going to draft us something, send it, and then once it's all approved, then we all stop in and sign it. Is that okay with you guys? Works?
Yeah, it's fine.
Me, fine to me. I can swing in and stop and sign something once it's approved.
And, uh, just another thing here, um, I just was handed this here earlier. The, uh, new zoning administrator, um, looked at the permit. I think he was going to see you guys today, Gloria?
Yeah, yeah, she approved a couple permits today.
Okay, did you want to speak to what he?
He just drafted this to, uh, approve the permits, because Jeff had a lot of, um, a lot of words on his, so he kind of.
Legalese.
Yeah.
So basically this is his version of approve, of an approval notice?
Yeah.
And I, I think he must have presented this to the planning commission, uh, as well. And that was my understanding, I don't know, but.
Is this the 7B project one?
No, it's just in general, like if he gets a permit, this is the documentation he wants to give back to approval. Which, it's totally up to him, I was going to say, there's nothing for us to do, it's basically, yeah, he was just giving us, sounds like an FYI, basically, this is what I'm doing.
Yeah, simple, but a lot easier than.
I, I would say that the fact I appreciate is that we're hearing from the zoning administrator.
Yeah.
That's a breath of fresh air, so.
And he had a lot of permits waiting for him, so he's doing good.
Good, good.
Good start.
As I just wanted to make everybody aware that, uh, does the town clerk have anything you want to report? Okay.
Just circling back, do you want to post the transfer station job or do you want to give it some time?
No, post it. Has to be posted if we'll have six people in here telling us five reasons we didn't post it.
So I'll send out a draft for you guys to look over and.
That's fine with me.
And then we'll.
What's that?
We had a draft from before.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, we just, we just did one not very long ago.
Okay, yeah.
You say more.
Yep, then we don't have to approve it. Put it up there and good suggestion, Cass. And we'll make the decision by our next meeting. Okay.
The only thing I would say is just make sure Art gets it, because he wasn't on the board at that point, so he knows what's.
Yeah, I can send it out again.
Going out.
Or who?
Because it wasn't, I mean, I know it wasn't very long ago, we just did that.
Yes.
Not that many months, it wasn't that many months ago, but. I know it was pretty generic, it was pretty general, it just stated that we wanted a, yeah, so.
All right, Katie, do you have anything else there?
Um, just that, the, that reporting is due April 30th. So now that I have your permission to elect the standard allowance, do I need a motion from you guys to go ahead and do the report or, because I'm planning on doing that soon?
Well, just to cover us, I'll make a motion that you be authorized to file the report with the standard deduction for ARPA.
Yeah, I'm basically saying we haven't expended any funds yet.
Correct, yep.
I'll second that.
I cast that. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing on all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that's all you have, Katie?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Cass, do you have any concerns?
Uh, just to Tom Weeks, all his years of service.
Good job.
I was going to say, he was a good job and stuff, and he'd be messed by a lot of people.
Yeah.
Not being there.
Bob?
Samus Castor said, uh, Samus Castor said, thanks, Tom, for his time, and Robert's already done it with the motion for the letter, but, no, he is going to be missed, he was there a long time, done a good job, and that's all I got.
Uh, to that same thing, I'm sure going forward, that from time to time, he'll stop into the men's club over there and weigh in.
Yeah, his daughter threatened him, so there'd be a tear for himself.
Rob? Tom's first question to me when I was running for the select board was if I knew what a pothole was. So I'll just tell him that I'll keep reminding Cash.
That's good, that is good.
Yeah, he told me he was going to keep an eye on me, so...
Well, you better keep in line, man.
Art, do you have anything you want to... No, just thanks to Tom, I, Tom's a great guy, I, grumpy old man, but I liked him. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?